Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 10th, 2024 meeting for the Franklin Board of Education. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Wickowski?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
Mr. Spronk?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. We stand for the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Go on, move.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wickowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Southwood Glenn is here tonight. And Dr. Mowbray and others. Mrs. Larson, please.
It is my pleasure to introduce my liaison school, Dr. Mowbray, and her amazing staff. There's a special place in my heart for Southwood Glenn because four out of my five children went to school there, although I'm not sure if there's any more teachers. My big kids had. They're going to focus on their sit goals, one and two, specifically working on increasing student growth in ELA. The teachers are going to demonstrate how well they work together in their PLCs to ensure growth of their target population and all students in general. And with that, Dr. Mowbray?
Great. Well, I'm really happy to be here tonight. And as Dr. Beer pointed out, we are maybe the first set of fraud of belts instead of kids. I think you'll be equally charged in the press. I want to introduce our team, Abby Lang, Rachel Peckler, Sarah Walchek, and Abby Gardner. They're our fourth grade team, three general education teachers and a special education teacher joining. That makes up the PLC. There are times when others join that PLC as well, but they have agreed to come tonight and kind of give you a gist of what that looks like. One of the things that we look at what our goals are, starting in at our work and our retreat in summer, our school improvement team looked at data, looking at map data and forward data, looking for trends and looking for areas where we could improve and get better. The thing that stood out to us was literacy in both of those measures. And knowing that while we had scores that were many of our kids doing well, that we didn't have the growth that we wanted to see. And then we also had lengthy discussion about the students who weren't there yet, who weren't yet proficient, and the kind of work that it was going to take to get them to proficiency. From there, we kind of focused our goal around literacy and growth, and we came up with what we call our Target 29. So we looked at, in this, some of the data sets, we were looking at deciles. So we looked at anybody below, any of our students who were performing below 30th percentile, knowing that those lower three deciles were going to need really concentrated effort, increased growth, and they were going to need it for multiple years. So we came up with our Target 29. If you go to the next slide, this kind of shows that that middle piece, if you're in the yellow, that's 51% or higher, you're getting that average growth or above. And then if students are proficient and they're getting a year's growth, that's good news. They're right where we want them. But if they are below proficiency, we're really going to have to be at 65% growth or higher. And this is as measured by math, or in the very strong growth, and they're going to have to have that for multiple years. So that was going to be work that would unite our PLCs. If you go to the next slide, we then worked and talked about SLOs. So all, for those who know an SLO or if you don't, the Student Learning Objective, all teachers write student learning objectives for the year. It is specific and measurable. And it's something that kind of drives our work. We write them in the fall, we get data. We look at them mid-year and make any adjustments, and then we look at them at the end of the year and see if we hit those goals or what, you know, talk about what we've learned, what we've learned forward. Our school improvement team talked about taking our SLOs and having that be something that we all aligned in the area of literacy and that we all aligned in that Target 29 and making sure that for our students who didn't have proficiency, that we were really working to get that accelerated growth while also keeping our foot on the gas for a year's growth for all students who were at proficiency or above, if that makes sense. So not wanting to lose that year's growth, but knowing it would have to be well beyond a year's growth for some of our students. That SLO then transfers down into the PLC, and that is why I brought the team tonight so that you can kind of see how a school goal transfers into a student learning objective and how that drives the work that we do in a PLC. So I'm proud to introduce our fourth grade team.
We can start with the next slide. So this is a sample of the Target 29 data based on their spring of third grade map scores. That's how we figured out those kiddos that fell in those lower deciles. And then talking with Mark Grunsky, trying to predict where it is that they would be going and what RIT score we were wanting to expect from them in order to get that either strong growth or very strong growth. And then being able to track it all the way across when they take their fall map, when they take their winter map, and then in the spring to make sure that they're on track the entire year, not just waiting until spring and going, oh, they made it or they didn't. So that really drives what we do as a team with all of our planning and all of our assessments and the way that we go about planning for our kids.
Yeah, so if we go to the next slide, we'll talk to each other kind of like we are in a PLC. And then any questions you have after, please let us know. But so if we're sitting in a PLC, this is where we might start. So if we take a look at our data, these are different students from our first unit. So as we know, we haven't assessed a fiction unit since the beginning of the year. Our fiction unit was called The Heart of the Story, and now we're moving into Details and Synthesis. So some prioritized standards that overlap, or one in particular, is the Key Ideas in Detail standard. So if we can just all take a look at student D, I'm looking at how this student did in Key Ideas in Details. And their overall assessment score was a 2.5. So knowing that this student wasn't quite proficient, they were still in that developing stage, we're going to have to kind of see what our breakdown of the Key Ideas in Detail standard is. Knowing that that standard is focused on summarizing, we can look at our breakdown and see where was a student excelling? What were they doing really well with? And then where are some opportunities for more growth? So I think the next thing we'll do is, on the next slide, take a look at our breakdown of this Key Ideas in Details prioritized standard.
So this is from, and we linked it in here, too. We don't have to click on the link, but for future reference. But we created a reading, reading, planning document that takes all of our district-provided standards for this current year that we're working with, and we broke it down into what we're actually looking for. So knowing that student D is in that 2.5 range, he's approaching proficiency, I'm going to look at developing over here. And to be developing, it looks like the student can recall details from beginning, middle, and end, identify accurate character traits, so they look like they're good on that, and support their ideas with evidence from the text. Those all seem to transfer into the proficient category, except for the ability to identify a theme. So I think that targeting that theme, thinking about what the character or what the reader is supposed to learn at the end of the text might be where we want to go with student D and figuring out ways that we might be able to edit instruction, small group strategies.
And if we go to the next slide, this is a summarizing tool that we created based on that standard and the way that we broke it down. And thinking about student D, what part we really want to hone in on and what additional support we could add into this tool. So we're looking at the very bottom where the one on the left is the checklist. The one on the right is the one that the students were using to either type in or write in. We really want to hone in on some other supports. So that's when we would bring in our special ed team or our EL team members and be able to ask them for what types of additional support we could support with, we could give to those students, whether or not they are ones that have an IEP or an EL plan or anything. So, Sarah.
And that brings us to the next slide where we show means of access. Some of the things we might discuss, for instance, for the student, they're able to type and write their responses, but yet that takes a lot of multiple skill sets. So I might suggest doing an oral response where they can just focus in on summarizing and finding those pieces of evidence to support the theme. Also, for small groups, I might talk about closed readings where we focus more in on comprehension skills such as rereading a text multiple times, looking for certain, like if you're looking for a theme, you're going to be looking at the character, focusing on actions, dialogue, and how that affects others in the character to form.
Yep. And then going forward from this point, we would then go and look for what specific text we might want to use in order to bring into those small groups and to the full class instruction and then be able to add or take away from that organizer for specific students. There we go. Are there any questions that you have for us?
In this process of trying to basically closing the gap, you know, are we including our parents, especially for the kids who are, you know, below average performance, you know, and we are implementing this kind of strategy? Are we including, is there an email going to the specific parent regarding for the individual student that, hey, we are working on this because I believe is that at the school, you know, we have limited hours, but the parents need to be involved to get the optimal results? So are we communicating one-on-one with the parents for the specific students who are not performing as expected?
Yeah. We include a lot of specific things that families can do at home in our weekly newsletters, at least the Gen Ed teachers, of things that this is what we're working on this week. These are some things you can do to help your student at home. These are things that we're practicing and making sure that the kids know when they are doing their homework at home, too. Like, these are the supports you have in place. These are the tools you can take home with you and have those conversations with your parents, too. And then if there is something that's coming up, we are always in communication with the families, too.
I think, too, and this was just one, like, touch point conversation with parents, but I think across the board, we did a good job of planning on how we would communicate on the changes that we are doing in the classroom during our conference time, saying that we are really prioritizing the standards and the skills that we want these kids to be able to leave fourth grade with and the ways that we're doing them are X, Y, and Z. And we had things ready to go prepped so that they could actually see it, too. And I think that was a good, I mean, we had good feedback from parents, too, and I think it was very clear.
I think that goes back to, if we go back a couple of slides to the actual rubric.
Yeah.
We have at the top is the FPS rubric that we were given with the standard listed there. The bottom portion of that, no, back to the, where we were before. The bottom portion of that is where we broke that down into language that was not only friendly for the kids, but also for the parents to be able to see and kind of use as a checklist as to what is it that my student is doing and what is it that my student needs to do to get to the next level.
And we did that for each of the standards that we're assessing in all of literacy throughout, like, the course of the school year. If you wanted to look in the Excel sheet, if you go back to that link, on the bottom tab, we have trimester overview. In each trimester, these are the units that we have that will go on each trimester's report card, and we have the standards listed underneath that topic, too. And the other tabs on the document down below, we have, that's our Key Ideas in Details one next door. If you keep going, there's the fluency rubric. As Jackie said, we just took the district-provided ones, and we broke it down into language that both students and parents would be able to just get what they need, pick out what their student is doing at school.
And for us to be able to give that specific feedback that the kids and the parents are going to understand, so.
It helps us have an overview, too, of where students are and also where we can lead them and the supports we can provide for them, especially this Target 29 group. We can pinpoint exactly where they are and then be able to figure out where they're going.
Andrew, please.
Was this standards breakdown work, something that just happened with your particular PLC? Or is that something that all the fourth grade teachers across the district did in concert? In other words, does the rubric look the same at Southwood Glenn as it does at Pleasant View?
The FPS rubric does look the same across the board. We broke it down in a way that made sense for us with the standard and then what it is that we're teaching in the unit, thinking about what it is that we want the kids to be able to do that goes along with that.
How are these meetings different this year than they have been in the past?
Well, I didn't mean to cut your question.
No, please. Yeah, I was wondering if I needed more, but clearly.
One clear distinction this year is that we have a list of prioritized standards. So in the past, we've used a curricular resource that had big goals for a particular unit, but now we have these prioritized standards that the district was able to provide. So it's been a bit of work this year of really diving into these standards and unpacking them and then having the autonomy, excuse me, to find different ways that we can assess. So we're able to look at our curricular resource with, as well as many other resources from the district. We have implemented Lexia this year, which is our reading online component. So we'll find different passages provided in different resources that we're able to then use alongside these standards. So I would say that the prioritized standards have been the biggest shift in our meetings this year just because we really have something that we're able to break down and figure out how to best support our students.
And when will we know, when will you know if it's working?
Yeah, well, so we're coming up on a new fiction unit. So the data that you saw, I think it's the previous slide from this. This was our Unit 1 data from all of the different prioritized standards. This has reading and writing listed on this spreadsheet. So now we're coming back to fiction. So it'll be really interesting. We were just finishing a nonfiction unit, but now it's nice that we have the starting point to continue building on that just continues to spiral. So it will be exciting to kind of start with them where we landed off and then see their progress. We assess with many different types of things each, for each standard. So we have kind of an abundance of evidence. So we definitely see progress that way.
Right.
But it'll be nice at this point in the year to kind of see that spiral and see how they're doing this time as well.
And then in terms of bringing in Lexia, being able to track where they are in that as well, alongside how they're doing in the units, alongside their map score, and then eventually their forward scores as well.
Linda, please.
So how many units do you cover in a year, then? The units, I'm guessing, always, I don't know what makes a unit different, because you're still focusing on all those standards, right? Every unit's hitting that, but what makes a unit different?
Yeah, primarily fiction or nonfiction. And then typically, within a unit, there's some sort of theme that goes along with it. So just the content that we teach. For instance, we just finished a nonfiction unit that was all based on extreme weather. So just different things like that. So the prioritized standards will spiral from unit to unit depending on fiction or nonfiction. And then I think the other question was how many, and we will typically do six units per year for both reading and writing. Thank you.
You mentioned extreme weather, and I think that's interesting because not, not, not for, I'm not going to yesterday. I was, I was going to, that brings in, that brings in science, which I, I assume means that there's some science in the unit as well, which I think is great overlap, and I think that's commendable, but maybe, maybe that's completely wrong.
Oh, we do have some transfer as well. I think the unit that we're currently doing in science, we just went from energy into earth rocks, landforms, natural features. And one of the extreme forms of weather that we had in our previous reading unit was earthquakes and tsunamis. And now some of the students are building connections when we learn about tectonic plates and earthquakes and what earthquakes can cause and what, or what causes earthquakes, I should say, the tectonic plates and connections are being built over there as well. So there's good transfer going on.
And the supports that you kind of mentioned, so do students kind of learn how to use those? Do they take them with them, or how does that work?
The supports that we create full class, we teach them as an entire class, and we will model them, have the kids use them in small groups, and then eventually have that transfer to them being able to use it independently for them to be able to be assessed, using that as like a guide for them to be able to figure out somebody wanted but so then, and then their traits, evidence, theme, and evidence as well. So, and we have that for each of the standards and for each of the units.
So you actually have kids using Texas speech kind of frequently consistently?
Yes. We have, especially for fluency and decoding, we have kids who will be there one-on-one with us, reading a passage. They can record themselves reading a passage. In terms of their writing, they can be typing it. They can be handwriting it. They could be recording themselves, giving us an oral story because that's the way that the standard is written, is that they're able to tell that story with beginning, middle, and end and have a character that makes sense and those types of things. So it's not that they have to do it a specific way. It's them being able to access it in a way that makes sense for them.
Mary, please.
Jumping way ahead, but when we hit summer, I had a kid who hated reading, and no matter what I did, and now she loves it, and something switched, but where did this all lead when we hit, you know, June? Do you prepare, do you have something for parents that can kind of not, so there isn't any backpedaling?
In the past, we, as a team, have created a packet of those tools and have sent that home with both the fiction tools and nonfiction tools, with the things that they could be working on. And then usually the last couple of weeks of school, we have some sort of unit where it's, what are your goals for summer? What types of books do you want to read? Where can you access those books? Where can you find them? Who could you read with? Could you make a book club with someone else? So getting them prepped and ready for that summer, kind of, reading goal-wise is something that is on our radar and is something that we push out to families as well.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Community comment is next. Nobody had signed up as of two minutes before the meeting. Did anybody sign up after that that we missed? Then I will not read through the community comment section, and we will move to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Go on, move. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Wickowski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. School board calendar. There is a Board of Education meeting Wednesday, the 24th of January here at the ECC and February 7th, 2024, at the ECC, both at 6:00. And a key communicators meeting Monday, February 5th, 2024, at Forest Park Middle School. It says 5:30, but I think it's 5:00 o'clock.
It's 5:00, right?
And District Administrator update. Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right. So January 9th was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So we like to take this opportunity to say how much we appreciate the Franklin Police Department and our partnership with them, and especially shouting out SRO Amy Hempe, who's in our schools every day, specifically between the high school and middle school, but also visiting the elementary schools. It's also been an exciting, like, past week or January for the police department as they welcome their new chief, Chief Craig Veerman, and we're looking forward to meeting with him and onboarding with the new chief in the department. He's also a part of our key communicator group, so we can all greet him in about a month and welcome him into that role. Today, Forest Park, sixth grader specifically, had a special visitor with Pro Football Hall of Fame 2022 inductee Leroy Butler. So he spoke with all of the students in the gym, the sixth grade students, I should say, just about kind of the difficulties he had growing up, how he persevered, how his hard work paid off. We have a great picture of him with the staff also. So just a nice opportunity. He likes to get into the schools and share his message. So we enjoyed having that for our students today. A couple of days coming ahead of us, we have on Monday, no school for students in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We do have our staff with us for professional development. It's all based in the schools that day. So a little different than our other five full days through the year, where we do half as a district and half in schools. After a continuous improvement, feedback cycles last year, we learned that around this time of year, a full day just in schools, working on things that the school's doing with their school improvement plan and their teams is advantageous. So that's what Monday will look like for our staff. The following Monday, the 22nd, is also a no-student day, and that is Staff Records Day as our secondary is finishing up first semester. They're working on their records. They're working on transitioning to their new rosters for the second semester. Elementary school, though they're on a trimester, it's a really nice opportunity to look at assessments, just like you heard with the PLC meeting in front of us tonight, like, kind of another dip in more time to look at student progress. Where are they at resetting some of that and getting it ready in the classroom? That's also the really exciting time for our high school students because they get to take exams. And I'm sure they would tell you how eager they are about that coming up next week. Hopefully, they used yesterday's weather day, I'm sure, as like additional study time and virtual meetings with friends to be ready for the exam schedule coming up. But that always means a little bit of modified times in classes. The high school will be communicating out to those families. And then to step back a little bit, we had our Festival of the Bands this past Saturday at Forest Park. So just a big congratulations to our music program. That's always through the whole band department, 612, on what they're doing. And Principal Rosinski also stepped in. I got a picture from Ms. Sapursky. But Ms. Rosinski also offered to me to step in with her as a flute player. It's not what I'm going to be doing, but she was able to and kind of a neat showcase. So we joked about shifting in every year. Somebody new comes in with their instrument and joins the band. But that's kind of what's going on in the district through this month, and we're very grateful to our families for being, understanding when we had a weather day yesterday and any weather that may be ahead of us the rest of this week. It looks like it could be interesting and definitely going to get cold. Any questions? Let me know.
Thank you very much. Reports, presentations, and other school board business. Financial audit report, Mr. Karome, please.
Thank you. So we have our financial audit presented tonight from the 2223 school year by David Minch, who led the audit for Kerber Rose. This was our first year with Kerber Rose, so I'll let David take over here.
All right. Thank you, Andy. As Andy mentioned, my name is David Minch. I'm one of the two government audit shareholders at Kerber Rose, and this was our first year working with the district. You know, first and foremost, I'd just like to thank Andy and Michelle for all their hard work for prepping for the audit. The audit's a lot of one-time-a-year transactions, a lot of one-time-a-year preparation. And when we showed up to do the audit, it was ready, and it was a very great experience from our, from my standpoint. I think, you know, working with Michelle and Andy on a number of different things was a very collaborative first year as part of this engagement. So looking forward to working with the district for the foreseeable future. But tonight, we're just going to kind of take the thousand-foot view or overview of the significant results of the 2223 audit. All right. So within the audited financial statements, there are three different reports that are issued in that financial statement document. The first one, which is typically on page one, one or three of the annual financial report, is the independent auditor's report. And essentially, this is why a district has an audit done, and that is to receive an opinion on your financial statements. The second paragraph within that annual financial report on that opinion page states that we issued a clean or unmodified opinion. This is the highest level of assurance that an auditor can provide on an entity's financial statements. So, you know, good news in regards to the fair presentation of the annual financial report. Towards the later part of the annual financial report, there's two additional reports that we issued, one being the internal control over compliance report, since the district expends over 750. Since the district expends over $750,000 in federal expenditures in a year, you're required to have a federal single audit, which is a compliance audit, and also a state single audit. So I'm pleased to report that there was no compliance findings to note when we looked at all of the federal and state single audit testing that we did. There is also an internal control over financial reporting report that is issued with this annual financial report. As auditors, we're not required to audit the district's internal controls, but we're required to take them into account while we're planning and performing the audit. And with that, anytime we identify a, an issue, we evaluate it to see if it meets the definition of a material weakness, a significant deficiency, or simply another matter. And there was one internal control finding to report, and I believe it was a significant deficiency, and that was regarding the annual financial reporting. So just to add some context to that, standards changed, I think, about eight to 10 years ago now, where they said, you know, even though, uh, this is, it's the district's numbers in the financial report, you know, we're not taking any numbers that aren't in your trial balance, but you're ultimately responsible for preparing the annual financial report. And this is a finding that every single one of the 56 school districts that we work with in the state of Wisconsin receives. And it's simply just a reminder that, you know, you're, you're contracting with your auditor to assist in the preparation of it, but ultimately, as management, you're responsible for the fair presentation. So nothing to be alarmed with by that. The next slide we'll look at, I think it's always important to kind of give you guys just a little understanding of, you know, where are we sitting from an operational standpoint? And one of the things that I always do is really look at the health of your general fund. As you're well aware, your general fund is your main operating fund of the district. And so one thing I always like to point out, and I've got some additional slides here, the next few slides that illustrate this, but really look at that unassigned fund balance component of the general fund. You know, this is all the money that isn't restricted or set aside by the board or other means for an intended use. But at June 30th, there was just about $25 million sitting in unassigned fund balance. That's currently about 40% of the total expenditures that the district incurred in a given year. And I'll illustrate kind of the importance of that, but it's, it's really important just to understand why, you know, keeping that fund balance at a higher level is important because a lot of the federal and state aids that districts receive don't come in until, you know, November, December, even later. And then also the property tax levy, that typically doesn't come in until after the first of the year here. So there's a significant amount of time when the, the schools are operating that they're not getting a lot of revenue in. So having that cushion, that reserve or unassigned fund balance allows the districts to really cash flow without the need to do any short-term borrowing, which is something that we started to see a little bit more this year, I think mainly due to the inflation and the, the revenue or the, the increases in revenues are relatively stagnant, both for, for any municipality or school district in the state of Wisconsin. So, um, you know, I always like to see a range of 25 to 35%. Sometimes that's higher than that, sometimes it's lower than that, it really depends on the operations of the district. But here on this slide, oh, I don't know what's going on, none of the, none of the, um, numbers are showing up here, but, um, so at the end, or for, the furthest right column is the 2023 column, but the district had about $62.5 million in expenditures in the general fund. The, as I mentioned, the unassigned fund balance is about $25 million, which equates to about 40% of those expenditures. And if you look, you know, year over year, it's been pretty consistent within the district. So that's a very positive sign that we're not seeing big swings in that fund balance or even that expenditure mark. Here on this slide, we can see a couple of the, the numbers. But this looks like it changes a lot, but when you look at the percentage, it really doesn't change that significantly. You know, we're within 2% the last five years here. So we're sitting right at about 40% at 2023. And I would say if, you know, you took at the median average, you'd be sitting just under 40%, which is a very strong fund balance and a very positive sign for the general fund. Next couple of slides here, there's just a few other things that I thought were a very positive aspect of the financial results for 2023 that I just wanted to go over in a little bit more detail. And the first one being that within the general fund, since the district has self-funded health insurance and dental, the way that that works is when you true up your liabilities at the end of the year, there's an adjustment to the expenses that are recorded on the trial balance or in the general ledger throughout the course of the year. And, you know, the way that the premium equivalency charge is set up, it's really meant to be a break-even standpoint. Obviously, there's some fluctuations in there, but when we true that up at the end of the year, you know, we have to adjust the expenses down and that oftentimes will increase your fund balance within your general fund. And so one very positive thing that we talked to Michelle and Andy about was really setting aside some of that increase in fund balance for future years' premium needs. The district does have stop-loss insurance, I know we got an email from someone that was just a typo in there, but, you know, setting aside that reserve really allows you, in a bad claims year, to, you know, keep your premium equivalency charge consistent, whether that's to the district's proportionate share or the employee's share. So, um, a lot of the larger districts that I work with really try to bump that up to a pretty significant dollar amount. There isn't a magic number as far as this is what we should have set aside as restricted fund balance for future self-insurance needs. It's really just an evaluation of your claims and what, what you're comfortable with. The next item on the balance sheet here, in the Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund, there is about $5.6 million sitting out there for future capital needs, which is a very positive aspect. As you'll see on this next slide here in the Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund, the general fund was able to transfer about $3.8 million over into that fund, which is a very great, uh, funding mechanism for future capital needs, whether it's replacement or just repairs and maintenance. But another thing on the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance, within the, the referendum debt service fund, the district was able to defees about $5 million of future debt payments this year. So just to provide a little context with that, the district uses current resources that it has set aside in that fund that comes from the tax levy to put it in a trust, a non-revocable trust, and essentially that debt is considered paid off, even though you haven't hit the call date on that debt yet. So we're seeing a lot of districts that are starting to do this because there's quite the economical savings from that when you look at the present value of when you're putting that in there, and then looking at all the interest that you're saving over the course of that debt. So I just wanted to point it out, I think that's a very positive aspect for any district to be able to fees debt and pay that off earlier. The next slide here, this is the budget actual for the general fund. I think this is one of the more useful pages within the annual financial report. But one thing I just wanted to highlight here is that, you know, that we've already talked about that the general fund's in a very healthy financial position. But if you look at the first column, you know, the district budgeted for a loss at the beginning of the year, and the actual results were far outweighed that, so to the tune of about $1.5 million, which, excuse me, allowed for that additional transfer into Fund 38, I'm, I'm sorry, um, Fund 46 for those future capital needs. Just the last thing that we'll cover here, I, I just think it's important for districts to truly understand where you're at from a legal margin for any new debt. The school districts are able to levy 10% of their equalized value that's set forth by the DOR. So that would mean that the district could have up to $415 million in debt. Currently, there's $44.1 million outstanding, less some amounts that have been accumulated for future debt service payments, so you're sitting well below that legal limit for new debt. So another very positive aspect of the district to be sitting that low from a debt perspective. So with that, does anybody have any questions on anything? Yes?
I was just curious, um, you commented on the importance of having a bit of a buffer for self-funded insurance plans to sort of buffer the, the premium fluctuations. Is that something that you would sit in the general fund or does it go into a restricted fund?
It's, it's within the general fund, so there's, within the annual financial report, there's a few differences from GAAP reporting to a DPI ones. You know, the fact that the board is taking action to really set these funds aside doesn't technically meet the definition of a true restricted fund balance because there isn't an external restriction, but DPI requires that to sit in a restricted WOOFER account code. So we present it like that, but it, it should sit within the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you, do you ever see that as a, a separate fund? Manage that self-insurance as a separate fund with its own fund balance?
Not per school districts, with municipalities, we'll see that more as an internal service fund. But that's typically at the county level or the very large municipal level where you're charging out to different departments.
Would you ever see the, the state moving toward that, wouldn't it be a, a better way to manage that?
I mean, relatively speaking, you know, school districts have maybe up to eight funds, so it isn't that, that significant. And the way the WOOFER is laid out is that the, um, the incurred but not reported liability and then the summer payroll liability, that's only allowed to be coded in Fund 10. So there are some restrictions behind that. I've never, I've never had anybody ask if we should set that up as a separate fund because for the most part, the payroll is conducted throughout the year and you're really managing it based on, you know, you're getting information from your TPA on where we're at from a claims percentage, so that true-up at the end of the year, you know, that can fluctuate significantly with that IBNR adjustment. I mean, where you're relatively new in the plan, I think it came down this year, if I remember.
$660,000.
Yeah, down, right, from what it was last year, so, um, you know, that's kind of the big wild card and that was the reason for the district to be able to adjust those expenses down.
How long does it typically take to, when you, when you start with self-insurance, to get that buffer generated?
Well, that's all determined by an actuary, but I've seen that IBNR swing pretty significantly. It's based on, um, you know, there's a, um, a couple of different factors, but I know the big things are the type of claims that you've had in the current year. So, um, you know, one of the actuaries explained it to me as if, if somebody gets cancer this year, you know, we know that there's going to be future claims out there for that, so that's factored into that number. We know that people go to the doctor, you know, in May, June, that those claims haven't even been submitted to your healthcare provider yet. So it's a factor of a couple of different things that go into that. But I have seen some pretty significant swings. I, I mean, s, the school district like Oshkosh or Beloit that, you know, substantially bigger, you know, it's a million-dollar swing sometimes. But there's ways to work through that with different things that you can administer through, you know, your self-insurance fund. I don't think it's going to go down, given the, the cost of healthcare, so. It may go down a little bit, but it, it's never going to be substantially lower.
So, um, our fund balance is pretty high, 40%, you said. Can that just be moved to the Fund 46 with, I mean, who, can we move that to 46?
Uh, yeah, you can move funds over to Fund 46.
Anytime?
Yeah, I mean, in theory, you know, DPI doesn't want to see, I'd have to revisit the, um, what's actually allowable, but typically DPI only wants any extra or any surplus in Fund 10 to go over to Fund 46 because they don't want you to create a big deficit in there. Because that trans, I'm not, Andy's probably more familiar with the aid formula than I am, but, you know, that transfer is aidable, essentially. So, you know, I don't, I don't think they want to see you taking all this money in the general fund and then collecting aid on it. But, um, I mean, you can trans, I have had districts who have transferred money over and had a, a slight loss in the general fund, but nothing too significant. That's a great question, I can look at that and, and let you know, but.
Because we transferred 3.8 million, right? And we still underspent 1. whatever that variance was. Is that correct?
Let me go back here. So on this slide, this is just the, uh, general fund in the basic financial statements, Fund 10 and 27, so special letter combined. But so of that, there was, I'll look at my computer here so I can do two things at once. It was about 3.3 million that got transferred over and there was still an increase in Fund 10 of about $750,000 this year.
Increase as?
In fund balance.
In fund balance?
Yes. Right, remember 500,000 or 517 of that is directly related to self-funded insurance? Yeah. So it's really hard, there's, DPI has some very strict deadlines where you've got to make transfers by July 31st. So, um, that's one thing we've been advocating to DPI, that they have to move that back because as more and more districts go to self-funded insurance, that IBNR report typically isn't issued until July 28th or in August. So a lot of times what districts will do is say, I think this is where I'm at, I'm going to make this transfer. And then when we work with them on their IBNR adjustment, I mean, it can go both ways, but when it comes down, then they want to make an additional transfer or sometimes they realize they probably transferred too much, so.
All right, any other questions? Comments? All right, and we will, um, we will be voting, we will be, um, do we have to, is this, we need to have a second?
Take action on the?
Take action.
Approve it.
To approve it on the 24th. Thank you very much, Mr. Minch.
You approve it or we accept it?
Accepted.
Accepted.
Okay.
All right, review and discussion of WASB proposed resolutions. Dr. Beer is our delegate for the convention next week.
Delegate for the convention, which is next week somehow already. So I think we all received a packet of the resolutions and so basically, once again, this is your opportunity to tell me how you want me to vote. Again, these are the resolutions that will help guide WASB's lobbying efforts over the upcoming year. So having read through them, was there, I was pleased to see there was some instruction about how to have the meeting not go so long this year. We lost our quorum last year because it went so late into the, into the evening, so.
Well, I was, I was pleased to see that there are a few less, a few less resolutions than last year, or at least that's what it seems. But also Resolution 1 and Resolution 2. Resolution 1 is, uh, student teachers and WIP interns, and Resolution 2 is about stipends for cooperating teachers. And, uh, it seems like they're, WASB wants to work toward helping with the teacher deficit, and I, I applaud that, but I don't.
Was that, would that be the state giving the stipend to the cooperating teachers?
Yeah, so this would be, again, the, the WASB, this is directing lobbying efforts. So they would be lobbying to have the state include as part of its budget line items to give stipends to the supervising teachers, which I'm sure would be attractive. I think most supervising teachers do it out of the goodness of their heart, but
And the love of the profession, yeah.
Work, I don't, I, I, from what I understand, it's not easy work. I've never done that work.
Well, it's extra work and it's, um, and, and at this point, people pay their tuition. The, the interns pay their tuition and the school gets it, the college gets it, and they come here and work for free and the cooperating teachers work for free roughly.
Right.
Yep.
Well, I got, I appreciated too the resolution, Resolution Number 4, just, it was simply, not simply, but changing language and I just appreciated the, um, the change in use of least restrictive environment versus mainstreaming.
Yeah, a lot of the resolutions seem to be basically language adjustments.
Updating from what I heard. I mean, that's a pretty thick book that they work with, right?
This is the book of resolutions as it stands, so this is the legislative.
They walk in quarters and narrow for time.
Yeah.
I think they're all.
I think the only other thing I had, maybe a little bit of a question about just, and I'd just be interested in what the discussion is when you have that. Maybe I'll pop over and hang out.
You are more than welcome. Actually, I don't think you are.
No, I don't think I can, so I'm kidding. Just, there is something that said like with getting alternative licensure pathways and making sure that people are qualified to be in the classroom, I would just. to be in a classroom, I would just want to make sure that anything that they were lobbying for was, like, actually, truly, people who are qualified to be in a classroom, not just taking somebody off the street and throwing them in with our students, which I think is.
I'm always hesitant to go to the microphone during these things, but if no one else is raising that point, I will use the phrase, not taking anyone off the street at the microphone.
I just, I think it's important.
I've never been brave enough to go to the microphone.
I just think it's important to know.
Have any of yous have been delegates, ever gone to the mic?
Oh, no.
Scary. And then we did get one more emailed out that was submitted after the time of printing. I don't know, Darlene, did you share it with everyone? Maybe it just came to me, you know what? It didn't come from you, it came.
From WSB?
It came from WSB. So, I'm sorry, I should have forwarded this to everyone, but the Milwaukee School Board submitted a resolution, and I will just read you the language of the resolution, and then I can summarize the rationale for you. The WSB supports that early literacy assessments, screeners, and diagnostics required in state law be provided in an English learner student's home language in accordance with current best practices and assessment and instruction for bilingual program students. English language students tested in English should not be labeled as at risk without verification, but the student also fails an early literacy test in their home language. So they're just basically wanting to say, until a child is also proficient in English, that they're not categorized as not proficient in reading in general, without also seeing if they are able to be proficient reading in their, in their home language.
I listened to a board me, I listened to the board meetings for MPS, and was listening to the, to the board meeting that that was discussed in.
Okay, did I summarize it accurately?
Yes, yes, it was very.
I mean, we have some English language learners in our district, but it's not nearly as significant of a challenge for our staff as it is in other districts, so.
It's still important for every kid to get what they need in their, in their language and be measured at that point.
And I think differentiating between English fluency and then literacy in general are sort of two different things. And I think this addresses it, but I'm open to hearing others. All right, well, I will represent you all well and report back after the meeting.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you.
One more thing, question. Mr. Cromie, I sent some questions. I'm sure everybody saw them. Do we, in talking with your WASBO people, do, do they expect any of these resolutions to make it, make it to the legislature?
Well, I would say the one you specifically sent, sent about repealing the revenue limit, oh my gosh, I would bet my house that that will never happen, of course, in my lifetime.
I mean, it's been in the resolutions packet since when? I think as soon as, whenever resolution, revenue limits were passed, that, that resolution took up residence in this packet.
I, I would say the, the CPI portion of that is something that will still be probably discussed until either that becomes law. I know we're at the three hundred and twenty-five dollars was put in for the next three hundred years in the last biennial, right? But I, there will still be that push for something related to inflation. And while inflation is clearly going down from where we have been in the last eighteen months or whatever have you, there's still a strong tie to, to being able to provide those inflationary increases across the board. And as we've noticed, just in general, like, our transportation contract is tied to CPI now, and that's becoming a pretty common thing that, it just is, right? It's one of those things where you can negotiate against it, but when you have limited partners to negotiate with, that also limits your negotiating power at the same time. So, that CPI one potentially, but the revenue limit, I, in as rent estate as we have, I cannot see that possibly happening.
It was exciting to see, to, to read it and think, oh, man, what if some of these things did happen? Like, what if we could save some of our revenue limit from year to year? Like, it'd be nice, but.
Well, there's also, you know, this, the summer school stuff seems like pie in the eye. With summer school, asking for full FTE for summer school seems like a pie in the sky idea, but.
Yeah, I think that's a tough one. Probably the one that would, if you're going to change counting pupils, would be potentially moving four K to a one point oh. But again, the, our daycare society in Wisconsin has a pretty strong lobby effort as well, right? And what we would be doing is pitting all-day four K versus the daycare world. And so, like, I think that one would have the best chance, although, like, if, geez, I don't know where I'd push my chips on that one. Probably, I'd just keep them and I'll just watch what happens. But I, I, summer school, I cannot see moving to a one point oh unless we, not we Franklin, but we in the state of Wisconsin really beef up, like, what does summer school look like? And are we doing it for credit? Are we allowing students to take something in fifth grade summer school that moves them into second semester of sixth grade? Like, we'd have to really beef up the educational component of it, instead of more remedial or credit recovery or some of the extracurricular type of things that we do, exploratory types of things.
That's why I always try and keep that in mind in these sessions, that this is not the legislative floor. This is, like, we steps away from it.
It's a wish list in some.
It's a position.
It's a position.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Dr. Beer and everyone. Open enrollment seats, Ms. Lankour, please.
Yeah, so this evening, we kind of have the first preview of the open enrollment seats for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. So in addition to the memo and the information you have just regarding the data about the seats themselves, in the, I wanted to mention, in the Board Docs library, there's that more extensive document that you are accustomed to seeing that kind of has the history behind open enrollment in Franklin in general, including the information from this current school year. So I'm happy to take any questions that you might have surrounding open enrollment. For those in the audience, we're recommending one hundred and thirty-nine seats in our general education and no seats in special education.
And those are across most of the elementary grades, right, but not?
Correct.
Seven, seven grade levels.
Yes.
Guess where in the library is the history?
Uh, it's under, in the library, and then in.
It's not linked in any, any on the agenda, is that correct?
Personnel and policy documents are.
But it's not in the agenda anymore, correct?
Correct, no, it's not historically linked in the agenda, it's in the Board Docs library.
Okay. I, how would I have known that, I guess?
That's where it's historically been housed, but that's why I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it, so that you knew that it was there.
Okay. Well, my, I had a couple of questions to you earlier, and my first question would be, because this, the chart you did provide doesn't have any totals except for the end, but it doesn't seem to line up with the Franklin Forward data that we're using for projecting future years. So how do you reconcile that with the numbers that you started with?
So also with open enrollment itself is a very year-to-year process for us, so we're really taking the data of the current school year to make predictions for the following school year. And obviously, Annalee or Andy can speak more to Franklin Forward, which is projecting more significantly in terms of a plan.
Yeah, I think you talked about, when in an email, you had the number being different. So the number that they used in the Roffers enrollment projections was the two thousand ninety-one you referenced. So that's not off of Third Friday. Like, the numbers that Laura is now using are the direct count of Third Friday from this year that were recorded. When you look at the report for Roffers, which is what I believe you were looking at, that was June twenty-three projections for numbers. So now you're getting the exact numbers.
So the exact numbers are significantly less than what we had then in the Franklin Forward. I mean, it looks like it's two thousand, I mean, like, eighty-five students less. My, my main question is that we are adding, you know, in the lower grades, and that is where our, our projection tells us we're going to have demand for Franklin students. So why would we, wouldn't we kind of be more, where is the growth projected in these numbers that you, where are Frank, where is Franklin's growth accommodated in these, in this calculation? And we know that we are projecting growth.
Sure, yep. So I think Laura said, well, like, what you do with open enrollment is you're looking at current numbers and you're rolling into the next year. Where when you're, we're looking at Franklin Forward, we worked with Roffers to look at what is the enrollment projection best estimated with growth in the community through twenty forty. And when he looked at those numbers, we predicted, or he's predicting that by twenty forty, we're going to have a growth of seven hundred and twenty students, four K twelve. So if we really broke that down, which is what I started to do with your question, it's a really good question, he's also figuring in on the Roffers work, like, a constant for open enrollment. So he's already figuring in what's kind of been the trend that we've had. He's calling it the constant in the report. So four hundred and ninety-four of those seven hundred and twenty students are predicted to be by twenty forty in grades four K five. So if we start breaking that down by that sixteen-year, like, lookout, and then we divide it down by, like, the seven grade levels from four K five, it's about four students per grade per year. So when you're looking at that across five schools, you're looking at maybe a student added, if this growth came, like, predictably every year, like, maybe a student added at each elementary school or not even. So, a couple things. To add that to open enrollment, we'd have to add, like, another column on here of, here's what we project to be out there, but that isn't, it's projected. That's why you look at open enrollment year to year. We may get no new students in the next two years, and then a larger subdivision goes up, we get a variety of students, and we get more of a flux. That number's going to immediately be looked at in the next year when we look at open enrollment numbers, if that makes sense.
Well, in your chart, you have open enrollment, or you have enrollment projections, and you basically have just taken last year's and moved it ahead. So there is no growth.
Yeah, there's growth in there.
There's some grade levels that have more growth than others.
At the lower grade levels, there's none, though. Where you have added seats, there is essentially no growth.
No, there, there is. It says one ninety in four K, twenty-four, twenty-five, enrollment correction, one ninety-nine.
Well, that's because there was nothing to, to roll, I mean, it's all new, it's four K, so those are all new.
But they're all bigger numbers.
Not second isn't, third isn't, fourth isn't, fifth isn't, sixth is.
Started to, I think, to go back to, like, if we were projecting and doing our best to work to guess where growth is going to happen and when, it would be changing the algorithm to how we're already identifying open enrollment, which is what we have to justify. If we have five seats open and we have ten people apply for them, and a school or a family wants to go to DPI because they don't, to process, to go against the process, like, we would be changing the process, and we'd have to rewrite our rules to how we're doing that, to be able to build in a projected growth within the community year to year.
I guess that one way to look at it would be, what would be the harm of if we froze open enrollment next year? If we just sort of stopped, you, offering open enrollment seats?
Right, we, we kind of freeze it.
Well, I think that, that there might be some downfall, because we would have classrooms where we are paying a teacher and support staff, and they might be significantly below the enrollment cap, and we get money, significant amount of money, for taking in open enrollment students.
I think it's probably one student per, I mean, it's spread across the district. We're not talking like a classroom's going to have five less kids, it's probably one or two.
I think open enrollment is a good business to have, because you're basically getting business in. You're not losing business out. So I think also optimizing the utilization of the resources which we have, and taking into account basically additional resource. It's always better to have open enrollment.
But we're, but if you keep doing this, we're, we're going to have schools that have open enrollment and not Franklin kids. So we're, we're building buildings for open enrollment.
We're not, we're not building new buildings for, for open enrollment kids.
But if you keep expanding it, how can you say that's not true? If you keep adding open enrollment, how does that not become a?
If you continue looking at the policy that we have with the maximum sizes in classrooms, that's what we're using as part of the formula to determine the amount of seats that are open.
And I don't have any problem with that. I just, why don't we, before we do the math of, you know, what we are planning for and what we have open, we include more growth for Franklin, knowing that we have growth coming in, and not look at it, I mean, I think I heard you say that next year, when there's new subdivision, then we'll roll it in. Well, we've already accepted that, you know, open enrollment seats are going to be with us, you know, through their career here. You know, we've committed to those families once they come in. We need to be maybe a little more proactive in projecting our own student growth in this formula.
I, I think we are being proactive in trying to optimize, as Mark Suits said, trying to optimize the, I mean, in a perfect world, we would have, we would have, the schools that we have now, or next year, we would have exactly twenty-six kids in each fifth grade class, exactly, and, and certainly that's not going to happen, but we're trying to optimize the amount of students in each classroom, and we're not accepting any open enrollment in the high school, because those numbers are closer to, those numbers are closer to the most we could get, and these students will be in, these students will move forward, and then perhaps, when we get more, when we, when there are more people in Franklin, we'll have less open enrollment seats available in those lower grades, because there's more kids that live in Franklin. But at this point, we're getting, we're, we're getting this money in, and they're taking up space that is not being taken up at this point. They're taking up empty space.
But we're doing, I mean, I'm not opposed to optimizing classrooms, not opposed to that, but we're doing it in such a very short timeframe, every year.
That's how open enrollment works. It's a year-to-year process.
But we can expand our vision of, you know, looking ahead and not be so focused on this year, because we're committing, and this is not just this year, we're committing these, to these families for twelve years, right? Which is nothing going to make them leave.
I don't think that hasn't been addressed in the process. As part of figuring out how many people you can have in each grade level is projecting ahead through the next.
I'm not seeing a large projection in these numbers, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm not.
Can the people who actually produce the numbers comment on whether or not future, whether or not this takes into account future needs at all?
So, to provide a pretty simple process, we will take the number of current fourth grade classes, we're going to roll that forward. So for ease of numbers, let's say we have twenty fourth grade classes this year, we're going to say, we're going to run twenty four, or fifth grade classes next year. We can put up to twenty-six students in there, but we don't think that that's a reasonable to fill entirely with open enrollment students. So we're going to say, we're going to fill to twenty-four is kind of our wanted class size. So twenty times twenty-four says four hundred and eighty. However many seats we have actually filled with kids in them helps us determine what that difference is between four hundred and eighty and wherever we are. That's the number of open enrollment seats. It still leaves two seats in all twenty of those classrooms, or forty seats that we're not filling or not even offering through open enrollment, should we have residential growth in any one particular school or throughout the district in and of itself. So we're not filling to the maximum amount of seats we put in a classroom, we're filling to a level lower than that, with the idea that we probably are going to have, some people move in, we just don't know where, or we don't know what specific grade level, but it doesn't make sense for us to fill all the way to the top, because one student pushes us over into a new teacher. Is it possible that in that same fifth grade scenario, seven resident kids move into Southwood Glen that are going to go into fifth grade? Yeah, it's possible. Chances are, we're probably going to run that at twenty-six, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and maybe take a look at, what are our educational assistance, what are they doing in Southwood Glen to help that? Is it possible that ten move in? Yeah, sure. It's more likely that we're probably getting one, two, or three, and adding one student per grade or per classroom inside of that grade level is much more likely. And given that, kind of to Annalee's point of the Roffer study and what it projects as growth, if we look at it literally, it's not very much. It tends to happen more sporadically, right? That, the subdivision I live in wasn't there five years ago, but now it is there. So Southwood Glen has a whole bunch of students that have come from that particular area that weren't there five years ago. But ten years ago, would they have projected that? Maybe, maybe not. So we know there's a whole bunch coming in in the Southwest, because we've talked about that and related to Countrydale. And Countrydale's the only school really looking at the squeeze long-term, right? If we look at that, it's moving up into the Ellets, clearly in the Red by twenty forty, but we're still seven, sixteen, seventeen years away from that particular school year. And we're not really projecting new schools from the sake of growth, it's new schools from the sake of what the school physically can function as versus adding space. So, again, kind of to make that point simple, we don't stack it all the way to the top, we fill it to a reasonable level, allowing for growth within that to still happen. And when that growth happens this year, that gets accounted for when we roll that forward next year and think about those classes. So from fifth to sixth, not as much, because it goes to the middle school, and we look at a whole list of class size. But from third to fourth, we get new enrollment in from resident, that gets accounted for now when we take a look at it moving into fifth grade.
We're going to be asked to fill.
We're going to be asked to fill, um, I'm sorry, one thirty, one hundred and thirty-three seats or something?
One thirty-nine.
One hundred and thirty-nine, thank you. Typically, what percentage of the seats that are available are filled?
I can tell you, at least from last year, we offered eighty-one seats, and we filled fifty percent of those. There's a lot of different factors in why families do choose, they may submit an application, and ultimately, there's a lot of different things that go into their decision for ultimately not choosing Franklin.
I feel like that's fairly typical. Is that? It's thirty to forty has been pretty historic for a set number of years. And to Laura's point, there's a great number of factors. They didn't get the elementary school they wanted. Or they can't get a sibling in. I have a third and a fifth grader, I need them both, or I can't take either. Right? There's a myriad of factors that go into it, and, and prior to moving into Franklin, I was one of those. Like, hey, child got offered, but the other one couldn't come, so. So, we're approving a maximum number, and, and we're, we're extremely unlikely to hit that maximum number.
Are these new ones, or this is, these are in addition to what we have now?
These are new seats, so once a student is open enrolled here, we don't consider them as part of the new open enrollment seats, they're part of the existing.
Did you wanna finish your statement?
No, I think that, I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking for clarification on numbers. I, I think we have about, we have about four hundred open enrollment kids. Four thirty-four, and approximately thirty-six to forty of those are twelfth graders, so they'll be coming off of the docket, so to speak. We'll probably add forty-ish to that docket, we'll probably remain relatively flat, um, given where we are this year.
I think taking into account, you know, specifically the high school, we have zero seats available, you know, and all the seats are in the elementary, which gives us like a constant future earning from outside of the district which keeps coming in. It's, I think, good practice of business to have, because it's a like guaranteed salary you're going to get, you know, every year for so many years. And hopefully, kind of, and I think, you know, uh, even with one thirty-nine, the way, uh, Mr. Cromer is explaining, we're only hitting thirty or forty percent, so still have a lot of gap. So, definitely want to utilize and optimize, because when you talk about taxes and decreeing the taxes, you know, uh, levy on the school districts and optimizing the resources, I think it plays a vital role of, uh, having outside businesses come in and give us some constant paycheck to the district as such. Because we want to not only decrease hopefully the tax levy, but also we will do, eh, invest in teachers' aid, teachers' retention, you know? Having, uh, especially more aids and all that stuff, so it takes a lot of resources, and I think that plays a little bit of, you know, a pie in the, extra pie in the cake as such.
Does anybody have any further questions? Um, please, Linda, go ahead.
So, we have about four hundred, uh, open enrollment seats out of about four thousand, so ten percent of our students are outside the district. I mean, would we have fewer schools if it wasn't ten percent? Uh, you know, we just wanna be smart about going forward. And if we're a growing city, should focus on our own Franklin families. I'm just, I don't see us looking really longer term here on this. I don't see, uh, that factored in here, so. I mean, you say two, there's two, growths of two in every grade level? I mean, why don't we just be transparent? Tell me about what the growth is, this accommodates. And I could feel better about approving one hundred and thirty-nine, but. We're talking about growth here, you know? That's what we're, you know, Franklin Ford's about, is projecting growth. And this is one hundred and thirty-nine students that are not in Franklin right now. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a first read.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a further comment? All right, uh, policies, thirty-six, eleven, uh, building access and security. And we'll start with Mr. Daniels. I don't know, um, school safety is Mr. Daniels, fifty-four, sixty.
Can I, can I do them both at once, or do we have to go in order?
Please.
All right, so thirty-six, eleven is around the access to our facilities. So, you have the situation report and the policy with you. That one is really just bringing our, um, we, just adding all the access systems that we currently have. So, we have our key systems for access systems, our alarm codes and keypads, and then we also have our, um, we're adding card, card access around the district. So, we really just needed to take this time and get that into the policy. So, that's really the main change to that, other than maybe some title changes and making sure that those, um, specific administrators were sought, or identified in the policy that oversees that system, so. Any questions on that, on this policy? Oh, excuse me, and it also identifies that we now have a better system in place for, um, assigning keys, card access, and codes as well.
Now, please continue with, uh.
Just one quick question.
Oh, sorry, please.
This is a key system. So, you added employees are, can request additional access to their direct supervisor. So, who controls the, the codes now? Supervisors then ask you? Is that how that works, or?
So, there's, there's guidelines, and typically, the access is really just overnight. You know, some additional stuff on the weekends, or maybe just extending, can I come in a little bit earlier in the morning, things like that. It's nothing crucial, but yes, the, their direct supervisors, which is really the principles. If they need, eh, if they feel like they need to seek out more district-level administration, they can. But I don't think that it's gonna really come to that, because a lot of times, that extra administrator, that extra access is gonna come through the Buildings and Grounds Department anyway. So, that's gonna be still assigning some sort of key, assigning some sort of code, and assigning, or updating, or excuse me, reprogramming the badges that they'll carry. So, it's still gonna funnel through the Buildings and Grounds Department.
Okay, thank you.
So, fifty-four, sixty is the school safety policy. Um, this one, there's a lot going on in that policy. Well, we took some of those administrative rules and brought those up into the policy, because it is more about process. But it's really aligning some of the, the current practices, expectations, requirements that are set by the state. Making sure that we identify that in the policy, and then obviously, as you guys know, you signed off on the school safety plan, there were some changes that we made around the drill schedules, and again, in this policy, we're identifying those drill schedules. That there is a drill schedule, but we're not including it no longer in the policy or administrative rule. That's in the, in the safety plan, and it's just really identifying that we have a district plan, we have individual school plans, things like that. It also talks about some of the visitor, um, expectations, we're in that process to enter, enter our facilities.
Andy, can I?
Please.
Can I ask, um, under where it says district, district safety plan, can you talk, the last sentence there says, "Parents and community members will be given opportunities to provide input into school safety measures." Mostly for anybody who might be watching this video, or for the people in the audience, can you talk about how?
It's really, it's really feedback that we get throughout the school year. We're receiving things, um, I would say often, typically around when we start having incidents, so. But I, I've had numerous email exchanges, I know Annalee's received a lot of email exchanges over the, you know, just this, this school year, probably the past school year as well. So, we're, we're getting feedback regardless of, um, people are reaching out, so. So, we did strike that from the beginning of the policy, but included it later on in the policy.
Just so there is a way, if public have concerns, they can reach out and share that value. Yeah, thanks.
Any further questions? All right, we can move on to, uh, thirty-seven, twenty-four, transporting students, fifty-three, sixty for automobile use, uh, fifty-three, seventy fundraising activities, and eighty-three hundred, uh, school board meetings. Actually, I'll do thirty-six, thirty with that, and then I think Annalee does eighty-three hundred. So, I'll start with thirty-six, thirty, that's facility use. Two things were, uh, or one thing was adjusted here, was the addition of sales tax to be added, um, as part of our procedures, just making sure that when we bill somebody who's renting our facility, that is not a tax-exempt entity, that they're aware sales tax will be added to that. We're required to pay it to the state, so we wanna make sure we're collecting that as part of our fee. I did evaluate our rental rates for, um, everything that we have in the document versus several school districts that border us in the area. We're higher than some on some, we're lower than some on some, but like, if you were to take a look at us, we're all pretty even down the middle, so I didn't adjust any of those particular pieces at this time, as we seem to be right in line. The next policy that's gonna have some adjustments is policy five-three, seven-zero, that is related to fundraising. The two main things added there were, um, I removed, um, GoFundMe, um, and just used crowdsourcing, as there are now many numerous sources of way to generate funds in grand scale, so let's wrap it all up into one, um, topic, rather than either list them all and then change this every other month if something new comes up. Just generalize it. The second piece I wanted to, uh, do was link policy thirty-six, thirty, that facility use to this. So, if you are doing a fundraising activity and it happens to be inside of a, one of our facilities, that you're aware that this policy is directly related to it. So, all the things that we say inside of our facility's use should be related to something that's happening inside of a school, even if it's fundraising, a non-school, but a fundraising activity. The other two policies on here, five-three, six-four, um, which relates to automobile use, and three-seven, two-four, transporting students. I don't believe there's any changes in those, not even nominal, and if they were, they'd be like changing the name of the person who's in charge, or the position title, I should say. So, nothing necessarily of any, um, large-scale additions to that or changes. Andrew, please.
I'm just curious, um, I was looking in the transporting students policy. Where did, how, what are the rules around students who, um, okay, guys, you can drive yourself to the swim meet? You know what I mean? Like, when students actually drive themselves to, to a school-sponsored event? Like, do we incur any liability when students are either directed to do that or choose to do that?
So, when they are directed to do that, yes, then, you know, some of that occurs on us. I, I, without a legal opinion, I couldn't tell you exactly what it is, but yes, we should be providing transportation to the greatest extent possible. And we try to do that in almost every instance, short of the, the bus company telling us they don't have it, like, there's nothing we can do. Then we have to find an alternative, uh, method, but we do hold some liability there.
Oh, that's kind of tricky, because how do you determine if a student is choosing to drive themselves to the game versus?
So, we should be working with, um, Cordell, that that's not an option to choose to drive to the game. Like, you should be riding with, if team-sponsored transportation is there, you should be riding there. Practice is a little bit different, um, even if it's off-site versus the requirement of going to a contest.
Right, 'cause I know, like, um, the dance team practice is in Pleasant View, so the high schoolers are pulling up there every night, going to practice.
Right, so typically.
We're to get in an accident on the way.
Typically, we don't transport to practice. Practice can be.
Practice can be, however.
Multiple locations, but we should be transporting for competition.
What about practice, like, for example, we don't have tennis courts, so if you're on the tennis team, you are responsible to get yourself to practice, and there's no liability on the school to get.
Same philosophy as if you're practicing at Southwood Glen, and you're a high schooler, and you're leaving the high school to drive to Southwood Glen.
And then liability-wise, okay, so, for example, if the swim team is going to a meet, and there is no bus for the swim team, and a parent drives a car full of kids, is the school liable for that parent who is transporting those students?
If we cannot provide transportation, yes, we, we're gonna hold some liability in that particular piece. To what extent is gonna depend exactly on what the scenario was and what's all happening, so.
Yeah, I feel like we gotta, I feel like that might happen occasionally. Makes me a little nervous.
Um, I would say it's happened over the last few years, as transportation's been tight. I don't believe, well, I shouldn't, I don't know if we've had any instances this year. I haven't heard of any instances this year where we haven't managed to get something to a bus, and I know Heidi in our office works like tirelessly to, if something's not happening, or some right way has said they can't, like, we're working with our bus drivers to determine if, or some way we can switch the route around to get them to route, to, to drive.
Wondering if we need some sort of a policy or procedure for the instances when it doesn't happen. I'm just, you know, I guess I'm a worrier.
Doesn't the coach kinda, isn't there a form they have to sign?
Well, I mean, in, in.
Coach is one thing.
In the policy here, it talks about if you're transporting students, you mean, like, there's all sorts of stuff, using your personal vehicle, providing, like, proof that your vehicle is roadworthy, like.
So, we went through this last year with the middle school. The middle school didn't want to purchase, uh, transportation, at, at least during basketball for both boys and girls, because transportation is expensive, right, and on a limited budget. So, um, as we put out to the middle school, it was, okay, we can do that. We needed to find a list of drivers. All those drivers are gonna need to get a physical, all those drivers are gonna need to have their car inspected, and we'll pay for that. We, we won't have a problem. We have a, um, relationship with a couple of area, um, whether they're garages or dealers that'll check your car out and tell us whether it's good or not, like, not a big deal. They didn't want to go through that particular process, because it's some organizational time on the middle school, or, um, on the athletic director at the middle school, right? So, um, but we do hold people accountable for that. We have a yearly checking process for all of our teachers who want to drive students, whether it be to a field trip, like a smaller group to a field trip or something, like, so that's all tracked in the business office through Heidi. And that has to be updated every year, insurance has to be verified and updated every year, um, physicals and car checks and things like that.
Okay. And I know we're talking mostly about sports, but when my daughter was at school, she drove to Marquette for some classes.
Yep, so that's totally, that's not ours at all. So, students choosing to do the early college credit, or start school now in summer, that's all on them. They're leaving to get their educational experience somewhere else.
Okay.
Linda, please.
Question on facility use. Um, when was the last time you did change your fees?
I would have to go back and take a look. I tend to take a look at what are, are we in relation to the other area of school districts, so one, we don't price ourselves out. And two, we don't undersell ourselves at the same time. We're trying to find that.
Well, somebody has to be the leader, you know?
Middle of the road.
Maybe we'll be the leader. Someone's gotta move them up. I mean, inflation has happened, and I'm just curious when the last time it was done.
Yep, we can take a look at that and see when the last time fees were changed. All right, uh, anything on those policies, um, or Annalee, um, you can, uh, talk about, uh, eighty-three hundred?
So, eighty-three hundred is pretty straightforward. We had the retreats that we did as a board, and we adjusted those liaison roles. This was just updating the policy to reflect those roles that we updated.
Thank you. All right, does anybody have any questions on policies? So, the first read, so we will be acting on these next meeting. All right, thank you very much. Board liaison reports.
The library for first meeting.
They're in the library. Did you guys go check out the library?
Oh, I didn't. Oh, shoot, okay. How do I get there from here?
Go to.
I get you.
Linda, you know how to get home live.
I can show you, when we're not in a meeting, but I did meet at Countrydale, uh, right before Christmas. And, um, had a good visit with Ms. Jean before she goes out, and you can read the report in the library about their school and programs.
You have one too, I think, Mary?
I think I did.
I reported on it last time.
Oh, okay.
There are a couple that, the Google form works well.
Yes.
When you go do a visit, you can fill out the Google form quickly, easily, self-explanatory.
Is it possible, or does anybody have any desire to have, when we, um, from, to some, from the last board meeting to this board meeting, if we have a liaison report, and it's, should it be, or can it be, um, included in the agenda automatically? So that people could read the report?
That would be a nice reminder for me to read it.
You're not checking the library every week.
I am, do not, no. I'm not good at scanning through the library for updates.
They could just even standardly say, like, board liaison reports, and then like, just, you know, not like linked directly to it, but just like, our, our house, kind of like the, um,
I'll just get in the habit of the people from. I'll just change my habit.
Our, you know, our housed in the board doc's library or something.
It'll be, it'll be fine.
All right, and I know we are gonna be talking about, uh, is it next meeting, about the, um, about the, uh, uh, treasurer's report?
All right.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, anybody else for school and community engagement reports?
Anybody else for school and community engagement reports?
Well, school and community from the last meeting.
There wasn't a lot.
Over the holidays, concerts before the end of the year, basketball games.
Basketball games.
Basketball games.
Pepping.
And festival events. Actually, I would, I would speak to that on Saturday was really, it's a, it's a phenomenal event. And it was, I can't tell you how many people commented about having Principal Wazinski join the kids. She learned a sixth grade song, a seventh grade song, and an eighth grade song on an instrument. She said I think she hadn't picked up in over fifteen years. And she was right there with them. And, I mean, the kids loved it, the parents loved it. It was really, it was very impactful to see her really get in there with them. And then it just also is a really great community, community event to see, you know, kids from sixth grade through twelfth grade and how that progression is and have, I mean, the gym at Forest Park was filled to the brim.
Annual monthly.
Yeah. It was, it was just, it's a really great, I mean, it's a great community event, but it's a really great, like, proud moment for our students to be able to say like, look what I did. The sixth graders played queen. I mean, come on, it was awesome.
All right, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C for discussion of administrative contracts.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Wukowski?
Aye.
Dr. Kahn?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Mrs. Yang?
Aye.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I was looking at something completely different.
I also vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
All right. Dr. Bier?
Aye.
We are in closed session. Yeah.
I think someone left her jacket in here.
All right, we're back in open session. Board took no action in closed session. Future agenda items, Ben Franklin's school presentation, Friends of Franklin recognition, financial audit report approval, preliminary budget, school finance overview, open enrollment seats approval, policies thirty six ten, thirty six thirty, thirty seven twenty four, fifty three sixty four, fifty three seventy, fifty four sixty, and eighty three hundred. Second read, district administrator self-evaluation will be in closed session. Administrative contracts, closed session, second read. State convention reports, athletics and activities report. Wisconsin general records, retention, adoption, and policies, fifty one twenty two, fifty three sixteen, and fifty three sixty three. First read, board, school board debriefing, school board member comments. I have a comment to make. I think that, and maybe we can discuss this at a future meeting, or maybe Annalee and I can just discuss it, but I, I think that as these things get, as, it seems as if we're moving further on down the list with, with closed session being later in the meetings. I wonder if we can, when we have closed sessions, if we can not go back to open session, if we can just do everything else before a closed session and then people who want to see the entire open part of the meeting can do that? So we would-
So move up the part that you just did, you're saying?
So, yes. How does everybody feel about that?
It's fine if it's legal.
You just have to come back into open and then close out the meeting that way. But yeah, that's all you have to legally do.
Or lighten the load when you know, I, I'm serious. You know, just lighten the load when there's a closed session coming.
How would it be different?
It wouldn't be, I just, it just doesn't make- It doesn't make much sense to come back into, come back into open session and close the meeting when there are, we frequently have a number of people here. They may want to see the entire meeting that's going to be open. So I would like to get it, I would like to get the, the open part of the meeting done before the closed session. And in that case, we're, yeah.
Okay.
Agreed.
In that case, people aren't really missing anything.
And they're not standing in the hall.
They're not standing in the hall.
Yes, and not standing in the hall waiting and they know that, they know that the meeting is over for all intents and purposes for them. Anybody else have any comments? All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight fifty six. Thank you, everyone.
And then this is my password. It's Hamilton spelled out funny. Oh my gosh. After the meeting remind me to tell you a funny Wi-Fi story. I have several, but I...
I was just gonna say which one?
Not happening?
Well, these are all first reads, 'cause I just digest all of it.
So look, here's what it looks like.
I mean, I read it.
It's just unhappy.
Oh.
Are you an F P S guest?
Yes.
F P S guest.
I think that's pretty good.
Listen, my computer has a little thing here that shows you your...
I don't know, I think I mean...
Yes, yes. I have a Mac, you have an H R. Well, mine might be a little...
You can do a...
They didn't have computers back then.
We'll have to buy them for everybody. Are we supplying these? No, we're not.